Okay, you ready Bryce?
Yep, I'm switching to live right now.
You look so official.
And I'm gonna mute everyone, so if you wanna talk then you need to unmute yourself, okay?
You wanna?
What?
Do you want us to use the raise the hand button to get your attention? That's down under the...
We can try.
When you hit participants, you guys, you can have raise your hand right there. At the bottom.
If I don't see it then wave.
Via reaction, oh.
Oh, hi Julia.
Hi Julia.
Okay, we ready, we're live? Okay. We'll get started. This is the board meeting and work session of the Tula County School District Board of Education. And on Zoom. We have all of our board members except Kathy Taylor, who has asked to be excused because she is sick. And we also have our superintendent Scott Rogers, Assistant Superintendent Doleen Pitt, Business Administrator Lark Reynolds, Bryce Early, our Technology Director, and Jackie Caligos, our Ministry of Assistant, who is taking the minutes. So thanks for attending. And we are zooming this meeting and broadcasting Facebook Live through the district Facebook page. So hopefully we have some people watching out there. So today we are starting with our technology rotation plan and cost. So Bryce Early, you are first on the list. But you have to unmute.
Thank you for having me and thank you for now being able to hear me. So yeah, since we talked about a month and a half ago, it's been a bit of a crazy wild ride. We've seen a lot of changes and for the school district, definitely for us as shifts in what we've been focusing on and what we've been spending a lot of time. So I do apologize for the paper you did receive. It wasn't quite as flashy or as exciting as I had originally hoped, but hopefully it gave you a little bit of an idea on what we can talk about tonight. And so as we discuss, there are some few areas and basically tonight what I wanna use this meeting for is to give us some direction on where we wanna go as a district, because we have a lot of different ways that we can go. And so just a quick reminder on what we talked about briefly last board meeting. There are kind of three different options that we could look in and pursue. First, we can look at continuing down the same path that we have been going in which we continue to purchase most of our devices, well, not all of our devices, through school funds and using our field techs to then place those devices, have them be the ones that manage primarily in fixing those devices. And then we get on a solid five-year rotation. We know that that's kind of been an area that we've been struggling with in the past. And so that would be an area of focus that we would make sure that those devices are then on a five-year rotation and so that we don't fall behind anymore. So that's kind of option number one. Option number two, we talked a little bit about virtual display. And so in that infrastructure world, you have a server where everything's on the cloud. And so instead of serving things or saving things locally to your devices, it all gets saved to a server. And then it really doesn't matter what device you're on, you would then log in and wherever you had saved, it automatically would save to that server. And we could use the same devices that we have, but then eventually we would start filtering out and go to what are called thin clients in which we would, they're much cheaper, but they're also much, I guess for lack of a better term, dumber. All they basically do is receive that information and relay it back and forth through the server. So they're not really able to save much locally to that machine. All of the apps, all of the, really the software itself is all housed and used there in the server, the site itself there and not on the machine itself. So we have that option. And then we also have the option of leasing, in which we look at leasing our devices and going that route in which then we would go through an alternate company, a third party in which we would lease through them. And then they would get us on a rotation and then we would just pay a set amount. And and then every year we would just know this is how much we pay. And then that would stay very regular and we would know exactly how much. And then they would, in a sense, keep up with the rotation and what devices and when we would rotate around. So those are kind of the three options that I left you with. On the paper, I threw in a fourth option to potentially look at to see if we wanted to throw in and start talking about bringing in the idea of one-to-one. I know that we have a lot of districts across the state that have started to venture into some little, some a lot, into the one-to-one world. And as we know with this shutdown, with this dismissal, soft dismissal, we've been forced into going into online teaching. And it's actually gone a lot smoother than I was, I was a bit worried on how it was gonna go, but we've had a lot of teachers, all of our teachers have really stepped up and done an amazing job in figuring out how to do it and getting their content out there for students to take that on. And so, you know, it's kind of has forced us into that idea of are we at a point where maybe we can look more into getting devices into the hands of students outside of school? And so is one-to-one an option maybe that we want to start dipping our toe in? And if so, when? And at what age group? And how much do you wanna go into that world? So a few things that I think we wanna, we can talk about tonight and see where you as a board want to start going. And then that will help us then as a technology department to start to figure out our technology plan and devising that. So that's kind of where the discussion that I, where I kinda wanna talk about tonight.
Okay, and I'm interested to hear what other people think, but do you, starting out, do you guys have a preference, do you know how the costs compare? Maybe get us started there.
We do, we do have some costs that I can throw at you tonight as we've gone through. I do have one preference and I'd be great if Lark maybe wants to come in and talk about any of these too. We went in and we started talking to some some groups about leasing. And then I started talking to Lark a bit about leasing and he actually brought some things up that I thought were very valid points. So just like leasing with a car, the main reason why you would lease a car is if you don't have the money, which virtually none of us have the money to go and drop money for a full car, right? And so we have to look at payments. We have to figure out how to be able to pay for that car. And so leasing for a lot of people is a great option in that it, you set up in a sense a payment plan and then you're able to go through and then you set up that same price. But it allows you to then keep on a rotational basis where after a while, you know, you rotate through that newer car, but you didn't switch to a newer car after every three to five years or so. And it just, it's different than you would in paying payments for a car, because if you go and do payments for a car, at the end of it, you own the car. With a lease, you then return that car back into the dealership. You have the option to buy it all the way through, but with a lease, you return it back to the dealership. So.
But Bryce, but in that case, you're also driving a newer car.
I mean. Correct.
I mean, so what if we keep a boat anchor that's 10 years old? We, I mean, that's kind of the problem we have right now, right? Is that we have, we have lots of computers, but they're antiques and boat anchors and that's not doing us any good. And so by leasing, it turns them and it keeps us more modern, so it's just an expense. Does that, I mean?
Oh, I agree completely. It would allow us to keep our devices much, much newer.
Paying for itself in the end of getting rid of the new ones, bringing in the new ones. Cause right, I mean, no matter what, we're gonna replace them. Let, I mean, technology department has already said, we're laying out a plan to replace them, do that every five years. But without 3% balance out by spending that, building the new ones, take off the old ones where it's your, you know, Bryce, your responsibility to get rid of the old ones, bring in the new ones type deal.
So that 3%, at least as far as the one that I'm looking at with Hula Packer, that 3% is just the interest for the machines. It doesn't, there's nothing in there as far as for maintenance or repairs or anything like that. Now, I'm sure that there, part of that is under the lease, I'm sure there is repairs and, you know, with that, there's warranties that go along with that, absolutely. So that's the question that we'd need to look into, that we would be able to understand. And warranties are definitely what, understand that almost anything that we buy now, there is a warranty that we go, that we buy along with it. The stuff that we're having to fix now, it's way out of warranty. And so that's kind of some of our problems. And a lot of our stuff now, like Chromebooks, those only have a one-year warranty on them. And so most of those, and we haven't looked at anything as far as leasing with Chromebooks. So that would be something we'd have to research a little bit more on too.
Okay, Scott, Brian, then Lark, then Melissa.
I guess if I unmute, it's probably better.
You're there.
You know, there are organizations that will do that full service desk kind of thing that goes with the lease. And but that department, those resources can be deployed towards, you know, that more frontline kind of stuff, but it takes away the annoyance, I mean, just those hardware kind of tickets. And depending what those are, I think we really do need very specific details before we can make a decision. You know, the three options all have some pluses and minuses, but I think all three options have a really significant financial impact potentially. And until we know what those financial impacts are, I don't think I would be in a position to even have an opinion of which one of those to pursue. I, I think the finance, at the end of the day, the actual hardware probably doesn't change too much. I mean, maybe versus the Chromebook versus a, you know, full PC, but any of these options could provide for the computer needs. This is more a conversation about the budget impact and the long-term impact there. One other consideration though Bryce, I did think about, while we are potentially paying, even if it is a percent lease, you know, the 3% of whatever those costs are, and Lark, is I would suspect that we probably would get those computers for less money. Those organizations are buying thousands and thousands and thousands of computers. And there's a very real possibility that you're gonna pay 3% to 5% less for the same machine as what we're buying, because we're not getting those same pricing as we potentially could with an organization that's buying, you know, significantly more. And at the end of the day, those costs may wash. Again, that's back to why we need some harder numbers. And but you may find that those computers don't really cost anymore, even with that extra interest cost, because we're getting, because whoever's buying them is buying in such large quantities.
Hey Lark.
That's a good, very, very good point. And that's what we ought to do to compare them side by side. But what I wanted to stress, or I forgot to mention in my rush last time was, as far as budgeting, the reason we could do this is that the majority of where we've built this into is out of, comes out of capital projects or capital project fund is actually doing pretty well. Goes back to a decision our board made, you know, years ago when we refinanced the MBA bonds. Ever since then, I can just tell you that we've, we've continued to see our capital projects fund balance continue to grow, because we've been doing well. And that's why I felt like what I was saying, that we can, we can put more resources towards technology. We can make it a bigger priority, because we are doing well there. So just wanted to add that point.
Melissa.
I, I was the same with Scott. I wanna see numbers before I can make a good decision. I think it's probably everyone, I think what I'm so excited about is the planning that's going into this. And, you know, I, I also trust Bryce and Lark. If they are really pushing to purchase as opposed to lease, I think we need to take that into consideration when we make the decision, because they have done the research to go along, at least in my opinion, done the research to go along with that. And Bryce will be, you know, the one running it. But I would love to see the breakdown of the numbers. And like I said, so excited that this is, you know, is happening and we can get them in place, so.
Well, and I think regardless of what plan we go with, it sounds like we're committed to budgeting to do something. And we've realized the need and that we're behind the times and that we need to do something. So we gotta commit to the budget. It's just a matter of how to do it. Superintendent.
I think it's a good discussion. There's a couple of things that we know. We know we want a five-year rotation, which leaves us with no machine older than five years. That's reasonable. We probably can lay that out then on a five-year plan and do the cost projections on lease versus, and what that lease also includes, whether it has service or it's just the equipment, if you wanna compare apples to apples. And then I would love to see a, in addition to that five-year rotation for current machines, I'd love to see a cost estimation on what going to one-to-one devices would look like for our students. And maybe that's phased in and you do certain grade levels or high school level first and/or elementary level first or what, you know, middle school. There's different philosophies of how to roll those one-to-one out. And there are a couple of districts that are, you know, leading Utah in that, Wasatch and Juab. And, you know, several districts have that one-to-one. It would be nice to see what that would cost, because I think this isn't the last we've heard of blended learning. Hopefully, things will get back to normal. I don't know what the new normal is, but we definitely wanna capitalize on this learning curve and continue to engage kids. It's the only way I know of that we can afford to extend the learning day and the learning year is if we have devices that are going out. Sure, there's concerns that come with that, but that's the only way to really extend that option for kids to do some self-paced learning and, and talk about great differentiation. I mean, that's just. So I'm a real fan of the one-to-one type. That's just the future of where we need to look at.
Yeah, and I can definitely give you, you know, just some, some rough ideas. Right now, we're, we're able to buy a Chromebook with a license roughly around $200 per Chromebook. So if you look at, and there's, there's so many different ways of looking at how to roll out a one-to-one, you know, whether we keep it at the school. And those are primarily used at school. We look at doing it where they can take it home. And, you know, when you take it home, that's, you need to start factoring in the increase of, you know, you're gonna have machines that are gonna be more likely that they're gonna get broken. But also you look at the advantages of then more and more options that, of what the kids can do at home with the teachers. So at what grade do you start at? You know, probably elementary kids taking devices home often. That's maybe something that I'm not quite ready for it. But then you look at secondary, but I just quickly ran something. So if we have roughly 4,000 high school students in our district at $200 each, that's $800,000. And so, you know, we start looking at rotations. We have two, two high schools right now that already are in one-to-one with Doug Way and Windover. And so we can definitely talk to those principals and see how they, how things are working there. And maybe what adjustments need to be made if we were to roll it out, you know, full district. But those are some great discussions and things that we could look at. I echo everything that you've said. It's, it's so exciting to be able to think about a five-year plan and everything that the district is wanting to put forward in building this. And the department is just elated that, of all the different opportunities. Where, yeah, we're gonna need some more help, you know, with only three ed techs and soon to be four. There's so much professional development that's gonna be needed to be able to help the teachers as they start expanding their world into the digital side of things. But wow, the opportunities that we are now looking at are endless, so it's exciting.
I would like to get some feedback, especially from Doug Way and Windover, because I know, I'm a big fan of blended learning and using devices. I think kids really like those, but I know there's been some research recently where some of the districts have gone to this, I don't know exactly what it's called, but the kids learning themselves and teacher-supported. And the research is showing that that's not necessarily the best and results are not what initially thought. And it's better to have the teacher teach and the kids, you know, and support the kids with their devices. So I'd be interested to see how taking those home, if we really are doing blended learning or if we're just taking devices home. And, you know, is it the best? Is it beneficial for our students? Cause I think it is, but I would like to get some, some data on that so that we make a good decision. Is that going forward with that too? Cause I'm not, I'm not opposed to one-to-one devices. I just would want to make sure that if that's the route we're going, that we're gonna stick with it and make it worth it.
It'd be easy to check one piece, Bryce. You would assume then that it went over high and Doug Way High, I would, that every single high school teacher has Canvas.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, if it's one-to-one school, how are you really taking advantage of that blended learning? Unless you're flipping classrooms, unless you got some blended. So if you don't even have us, then what good does one-to-one device do? I agree with that point.
So maybe some dollars and some data and then we make the best decision we can. Camille, do you have something to say?
Yeah, and we could definitely work on the dollars. You know, right now, I would have had more dollars, but not surprising, a lot of companies right now are struggling a little bit with some of our different getting quotes and so on. But yeah.
You've had a couple to do the last couple of weeks, haven't you?
Well, and I, I've heard great things about the teachers going online and parents have been pleased with what's happened. So if we can continue that momentum, then that would be great.
Yes.
Hey, just two quick questions that are related to computers, but not necess, I mean, on the fringes of this conversation. One is with these teacher devices that we're looking at buying, are those desktops or are they gonna be laptops?
Desktops.
So it begs the question and is, you know, especially in this environment, you know, if they had had laptops, clearly that would have been advantageous. And the, the cost difference, I recognize that there is a cost difference. But at the point we trust the teachers with a lot of other things, if we empower them with laptop, it does afford those situations like today. It also does allow them some flexibility to do other things not in the classroom. And, and I guess I'm just wondering, is that something, you know, and I recognize there's a cost component. Desktops are lots cheaper, but, but is that also a win for our staff? And that was one question just around laptops, desktops, particularly for our staff. If we're talking about giving one-to-one devices to students, but we're still anchoring our teachers to their classroom to use a desktop. Is a thought. And as we've talked about, you know, different learning environment potentially at the new high school, right? Then you've got a teacher who's bouncing between classrooms. The idea that they're connected to a desktop that is either an office or workstation, but it's not going from class to class through the day. It seems like maybe we ought to consider the laptops and what role that has and the thought, it was an observation I had particularly in current environment. The second observation is the challenge of Trustlands. And it seems like every year we hear of, you know, Trustlands approvals, somebody's always buying another computer lab. And and while those are good, right now in the, or the old world, that was a good use of Trustlands funds, I suspect. But it would feel like to me that if we could get the devices we need and we're not using Trustlands money, we could actually have some more consistency on that. And I guess if we're allowing Trustland purchases, my recommendation is that we really enforce standards that meet the same expectations that we end up. And whether that's a rent or a lease or a purchase, but I think whatever we go with, we shouldn't have somebody doing one-off. Let's not have a school going and buying a computer lab if we decide to lease. Let's keep the whole district on the same model, so we're on that same cycle. Just two observations.
Yeah.
Melissa.
And going back, I agree with Scott on the laptops with teachers, but that's probably a non-issue right now until we decide to go to one-to-one. The thing with one-to-one, are we are financially, any, I mean, is there funding to go to one-to-one? You said, you know, we've increased our budget, maybe it's a question for Lark, I don't know. Is this even something that's possible? I mean, it excites me, but I want the research to go along with. I know schools and districts across Utah and the country don't, wanna make sure we roll it out correctly. But is this even an option for us soon?
I would say yes, but not in one fell swoop by any means. When you look at 15,000 students or so, and granted, we already have a lot of devices in the district, so we wouldn't need that many. But if we, first off, I think we'd need to plan it out. And I don't think we do just throw everything out there just because we don't have the training. We're not ready to just go full one-on-one. But if we set up the groundwork and maybe had a multi-year rollout, I do think that there is that real possibility if we plan this out right. And maybe we start at the, you know, the high school and work our way back or however we set up our plan. But yeah, I think there is that possibility if that's a direction that we feel we wanna go.
Lark.
Yeah, I was gonna just piggyback along that. I think it is, let's say it's $800,000 next year and we have new teaching, teacher machines, for example. That's what it costs at secondary, we could look at it. Another thing I just wanted to point out that is, that's good is this money that's gonna come from the federal government of late. Scott Jones, if you've been seeing those emails that he's been sending out on finance, I know some people are getting them. But one of the things that they've stressed is that it could be used for is help, to help schools get up to, well, the way he worded it was to buying technology to get remote learning off the ground. So depending on how much money that comes, if we, you know, if that's our priority, we dedicated that money, maybe some of the budget next year, I think we could start whittling away at it, for sure.
Ideally, ideally, if you have one-to-one, then your need for having those labs really diminishes. And you might need a specialty lab for a specialty class like Grant Roberts and the, you know, CLC. But the actual reading labs and the labs in schools, I mean, we could then use that space for classroom space for students if, if we were, of course, at one-to-one. There's two of each elementary, which means we could have two additional classrooms right there if students had one-to-one devices.
Okay, Scott and then Melissa and then Mark.
I, the only challenger on one-to-ones that I don't know is the data, there must be data on it, Bryce. If you could include in that analysis is what is the life expectancy of a one-to-one computer? Um, you know, it, it's not a buy it once and then for the next 12 years, we don't have to buy them another Chromebook, right? So what is a life cycle of those? And, and I guess I would almost be surprised, my college kids have not made it four years with laptop. So I'm curious to know how, wha- what is the refresh rate required on one-to-one devices as part of that analysis? So if you could, as part of that, I'm sure there's some data out there that says you're gonna be replacing this on two-year cycle or a 30-month cycle or whatever that is.
Three, three years is what we would hope to get out of our um, Chromebooks. Uh, all you can get really on a regular warranty is one year. You can buy the extended warranty on a Chromebook, but most of the time that's not real cost-effective. Uh, so three-year rotation is probably what we're looking at. If we can get five years, it's great.
Is that, is that data from others or is that a hope? I mean, is there actually some data out there that says, I mean, there's been a school districts for a while now that say, this is what we've got, and maybe we could just do some research on that?
Sure, we can do it. I'm just going off of what we're getting out of ours right now.
But those aren't going home with students in backpacks and.
The, the ones in, in Windover are.
Oh, okay, good point. And that, that's just helpful, right? I mean, okay.
Okay, Melissa?
I'm just, I just wanna make sure and I just wanna make sure that obviously no decisions are being made tonight. We all want more numbers.
Yeah.
That if we're looking at that one-to-one thing, that really does change these, this five-year cycle, I think, right? I mean, and maybe it does change if we're looking at laptops for teachers versus um, desktops. And if we're not needing to replace computer labs. Anyways, I, and so I don't know, where do we go from here? Do we decide as a board or, you know, between next meeting or when we get the data and then start planning it out? Cause we need to.
We, we definitely need more data before we, before we make a decision. Right?
And I can definitely start gathering that as, as best. I, I think some of it's also philosophy, you know, if you feel like that one-to-one's where you wanna go or if we're not ready for that. But um, yeah, I'm, wherever you want me to go, I'll start figuring out, trying to figure out, come up with answers.
I don't think I could even make that decision that one-to-one is the philosophy I'd wanna go with without having more information about all of the options. Maybe I'm the only one. Lark has his hand up.
Camille has it first?
I don't know if I was first or not. I just, my only thing I wanted to bring up, um, just really quick was while we're looking at all the numbers and everything, and especially if we want to pursue more one-on-one, I have to make sure that we're just being aware of what, what our responsibility and what our roles are as well, so.
The last thing I was just gonna add, and I hope I'm helping Bryce, not hurting. But uh, one of the options we, you know, we've, we've talked a lot about devices, but one of the options uh, that you threw out there, the VDI, virtual desktop, I think is what it's called. I got to test a little bit is why I just dabbled in it. And whether you go one-to-one or, or even replacing some devices down the road, the reason I happened to like that a little bit, we tested it, is it works on any device. So, and, and uh, what I mean is if one goes down, you simply replace device, give them access to their desktop, has all their files, everything they've saved. It would make this replacement part very easy, but that's, that is a, a third option that I think also needs to go along with this one because it's neat in that virtual environment and because you just don't lose things. They, they seem to come back really quick.
Yeah, and I have numbers, I can give you some ideas on those too. So getting a quote for that. So VMware is, VMware and Citrix are the two main um, VDI vendors that are out there that have the software that you use. And so we did it based off just a thousand um, users, meaning that we would be able to have a thousand people be able to use the, the software. And so just off of the software, it would be um, $478,000. And then uh, the server that we would then need to purchase to go along with it uh, is um, So now we would do that, if we were to go down that route, it's a little high upfront. Those licenses, those VMware licenses that you would purchase, those are a one-time purchase. So once you have those, you have those for the rest of your life. So if we were to go down that route and look at a thousand, we could definitely jump into that and see and test it and maybe start at some high school labs and uh, see what we think about it. But then if we liked it, you can continue. It's high upfront, meaning that we're spending quite a bit of money upfront. But then, once you have the licenses for all of those students, then that price, that heavy price for the license drops off. And then all you're paying is for the maintenance. And then you have to replace your servers about every five years. And so over time, it's a lot cheaper.
Bryce, is that, is there also the non-financial aspect of that? Is it easier to control security, appropriateness, the school use, that kind of stuff? It, it would feel like to me, if you're running it off your servers, you could really button down the network. And even one-to-one devices, it would feel like to me that you could really control that a lot more than out, is, is that?
No, you're, you're right on there because you are able to control it all from that backend server. And so uh, yeah, all, everything, any updates, anything in regards to security, you are controlling it from that one central location. So right now, if we have any updates or anything that we really need to, so much of it, we have to have our technicians go out and put their hand on so many of our machines. And so in this, we would have um, maintenance really do it just in this one location. And so it, it would require us really to have more people who would be able to work on the server on the backend. But uh, yeah, absolutely. Security, everything, it, it really allows us to, to be much more, as you said, buttoned down, um, much easier.
If, if all things were equal in this setting, and, and I guess that doesn't, it sort of does because you still have to have some devices of some sort. I mean, that solution, you still have to, you, you've got the backend stuff, but you still have to have devices in some form. But I, I really like the idea of having that control residing in the district office, you know, kind of in that more centralized form. And particularly in light of some of the audits and those other things that we've had recently. I, I really, really like the idea that we bring that control close, I mean, under a central umbrella. We don't have, I, I see that as a plus and as, as long as the cost can make even close to.
Yeah, it's, it'd be very expensive. And I don't know, we'd have to really see the comparison upfront compared to the other. It, it's expensive upfront, but then cheaper down the road. But then again, we can use any device. So all the devices that we have right now, um, whether it be a Chromebook, whether it be uh, the current laptops we have, whether we have desktops, whether it be um, you know, iPads, any of those work. Even cell phones work under a VDI environment. But then once those start um, needing to be replaced, we would replace them with thin clients, smaller devices, uh, not necessarily smaller in size, but just um, smaller in abilities, but that just function through as a gateway really from the server to the individual. So much cheaper, probably $200, $250 for each of those devices.
Any other discussion, questions? I think going forward, it sounds like we just need a lot more information. Is that helpful, Bryce?
Yeah, it's a, it's a lot of information and I uh, I just don't really know where to go because there's so many great options out there. And it's just making uh, what decision we wanna go with, because they're all good, they're all good.
Well, I think I, some of that kind of goes back on you guys, your department in saying, you know, you, talking to other districts and seeing what really is maybe the best for your department. And then making it cost-effective as well. But I guess, can you use the word "cost-effective" when you're talking about technology? I don't know, maybe not.
Doesn't seem that way anymore.
But for sure, I think we need some cost estimates on all of the options. And then maybe a little more data on the one-to-one devices specifically that have been used in our district. And maybe, you know, a comparison with some others. Those are mostly the notes I took that we've asked for.
I, I don't think, Madam Chair, that we need to reinvent the wheel. There's several things out there like Project Red. I mean, there's several lessons learned about just buying devices and not providing professional development. There are districts that have taken the lead in Utah. We definitely need to learn. There's the League of uh, Innovative Schools. I know Juab and their superintendent, Superintendent Robbins, who by the way is a finalist at Canyons. Uh, I know they've uh, done a lot of research. So Bryce, you don't have to do that raw research, you can reach out to some of those groups. I'm sure tech directors and Euro Association across the state would be willing. And Sarah Young and this, and uh, uh, the guy from UEN, I can't remember what his name is, Timothy, it's his last name. The su- the superintendent used to be at Park City, now he's over UEN.
Ray Timothy.
Ray Timothy, that's right, not Timothy. So, you know, I think uh, Ray Shop, UEN, et cetera, uh, and tech directors, probably through USET can get you uh, some of that, you know, updated research.
Okay, sounds good.
And then we'll get a report back?
Yes, yes. And, and I'm hoping when I can report back that it's uh, more in person.
Okay, well, let's, let's all cross our fingers for that.
Yeah.
Before we let Bryce go, can we just, how, let me just make sure he knows what, how appreciative we are of him and his department over the last several weeks. You know, they've done some really heavy lifting. And I, I think we've all said that, but I think as a board specifically, we need to, you know, I don't know, Bryce, we can't really pat you on the back here, but just know grateful you are for all of it.
Kind of applause.
Yeah, I have an amazing team. Um, all 17 of them have just put in an amazing amount of effort and uh, I couldn't be prouder of, of what they've done. So um, they, they all are superheroes to me, so it's pretty awesome.
Every time I get a comment from a parent talking about how awesome our district is doing, it just, it makes me happy, number one, but I try to give kudos to the team because I think your team has just been phenomenal in supporting our teachers, supporting our parents. So.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, does that give you enough to start with? Too much?
Yep, no, we got it.
Okay, hopefully things calm down so you have time to do that too.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, next on the agenda is competency-based education, Snow College Online Proposal Superintendent. You have to turn off your, you have to turn on your mic.
You're muted, super.
Sorry about that. That should make your day, Alan, I'm muted. Uh, I, Madam Chair and Board members, this shouldn't take too long. It's something I think is exciting. Uh, we recently were down at Snow College looking at some of their online programs. Actually, um, it was Matt Bowman through My Tech High and our Blue Peak Online students. We wanted to just continue to give them different options. And right now, they have the option of earning an associate's degree. It's pretty hard to earn an associate's degree. It occasionally happens through Weaver State and, and some of our other concurrent enrollment partners uh, in, in Utah. A lot of our kids through My Tech High that are otherwise, you know, homeschooled, they're online students for us, have been participating in College for America, which is through Southern New Hampshire University. And um, so what I've included for you is a new program that we're looking at doing with our My Tech High students and that could actually be accessed by any of our students. And that is a competency-based program. I sent you the, the kind of the, the one sheet on Southern New Hampshire University and you can see the way those courses are listed. They're not very traditional, they're more um, broad-based. The names don't necessarily, one of the problems students have had is the names of those courses don't necessarily get recognized at uh, at uh, four-year colleges or universities. And so some kids have had some bumps uh, with the pass/fail grading at Southern New Hampshire University. What Snow College is proposing is that uh, this wouldn't be in addition to the money that we pay to My Tech High, but one of the options for My Tech High students or for our students who wanna be online students is that they could work on the list. If you'll see, the back of that form is actually Snow College and what they're proposing. And one of the things different is the list of courses are, are more traditional higher-ed courses that are easily recognized. To the right, you see the benefits and the perks of that Snow College online option. Students would be able to enter nine, grade nine through 12. They would actually be working on 60 college credits to receive an associate's degree by the time they graduate. And then we would honor that associate's degree with a high school diploma. It's not for every student. Most students want that traditional high school experience, but for those that are online or those that are really remote in our online program uh, in areas that aren't or are homeschooled and don't prefer a traditional school, it's really a great option. And you know, um, we either play in this field. If, if, if we stay traditional and say, now we're not gonna, you know, that's why charter schools exist, because the creative, innovative ways of giving parent choice and giving students what they need and meeting them where they're at. And I think we did that with My Tech High and with Blue Peak Online, and I think this is the next step. So it's more of an informational item. I'm just excited by this next year, we're gonna roll out this. Uh, it's still Blue Peak Online, but our kids, whether they're at My Tech High and through that or whether they want to just approach us, there's nothing to keeping us from having some of our kids do uh, online associate's degrees and earn a high school diploma, grades nine through 12 and earn it early. And that's, that's the reason I called it competency-based, because it's not seat time. And everything we're reading right now in K-12 education is moving away from the classical seat time and getting more to mastery or competency-based learning. So this is kind of new, but um, we're not jumping in totally into the deep end. We're just kind of wading in and I think we're already there and we've seen the benefits in our district for some of our kids. And uh, this will be an option for some, I don't think it'll be many. I don't, I would be surprised if it was 100 kids that tried to do that. But gosh, 100 associate degrees plus their high school diploma, that would be a really cool thing for those kids. So when you look at that, do you have any questions on that?
I would be surprised if it was even 100, just because you basically have to give up your high school um, career, I don't know.
Yeah, for everybody, but there are a few that want that option. And why should they go to Southern New Hampshire for that option when we can do it here? I hear two years ago, Snow College received, and, and this year in the legislature, they received a, a special appropriation to lower, because they're gonna be providing CTE, like a tech college. There is no tech college in Sevier Valley, so the, the Snow College Richfield campus is the tech center for those school districts they're surrounding. And so they received similar funding to what uh, Tuolumne Tech does. And they also received the designation of being able to be a statewide online provider. So they're going to offer this not just to our district. I can tell you that Provo and Nebo districts and Juab district have already signed on to allow their kids this option of being able to take Snow College Associate's Degree Program and it counts as, as, I mean, if you get an associate's degree, here's, here's the high school diploma. You'll graduate the same year from associate's degree at Snow College at our high school.
Melissa, did you have a question?
No, I, that's what I was wondering if the, if the traditional student would do any of this. But you answered it. Sorry, backwood.
They can, but they, they probably need to focus on the Snow College associate requirements and not our graduation requirements if they're going to quickly earn that. But they, you know, they could, they could, they could be dueling that. There are some students, overachievers that, you know, will also want to take band or something locally, one of our CTE classes, but will want to, you know, have an early college graduation opportunity. I think it's pretty exciting. It's pretty great that it's an in-state partner. One of our institutions that's supported by the legislature.
Awesome. Any other questions?
The other thing I will tell you is they've agreed, if you'll see, they've agreed not to just give a pass fail grade. They're gonna transcribe their mastery. Once you've mastered, if you, if you have mastered all those competencies, then it, it's trans receiving, you know, junior college transfers or community college transfers.
Awesome. Any other questions, comments? Okay, that was easy.
Cool.
I feel like I needed, that was easy button. Okay, next. Bond informational campaign timeline and funding. Lark, your time to shine.
My time to shine, okay. Well, I'll try and actually share my screen here because unless you're, if you're anything like me trying to raise your hand or you know, have some input on, on Zoom and try and multitask at the same time, sometimes that's difficult. So let's see if this works. Maybe. Okay, is it coming through for you guys?
Yes.
I hope you're just seeing the board docs, but far as the fun time, I think you, after our last meeting, what I mean by fun is I, as we ran the, had Zions run those scenarios, I think as I said last time, I was just blown away that what options are on the table for us as far as what we can do next year. So I just gave you all the information we had, at least from the four scenarios they ran in here. First thing I wanted to talk about is just calendaring because I know that was, I think the first thing we listed on there was a calendar of events. I haven't, I, I did ask Alex to update this so we can have some, you know, we've, we like to have this calendar lookout. And that way you can have it for future reference. But as you and so we have now, I think we, if I recall right, last year it was January or we decided not January, July actually to adopt it just a little bit early. But that's the time we want to rely on, we need to have a final number then, what our plan's gonna be. And, and have everything geared up until the election is this November. So, does anybody, did anybody have any questions on the calendar?
I don't see any.
I felt like because we just went through this last year that everybody was up to speed and we didn't need to focus on it for too long. Other than just a few reminders like that. Next thing in there is you saw they had the different scenarios and I, and I put them in. I wanted to focus on the last one for here. So as you know, they all came back just positive in that we wouldn't have a as large of a tax increase. As a matter of fact, we show negative numbers that looks like a decrease. That boiled down to, as I pointed out, those three factors last time, but one I wanted to highlight specifically, you know, interest rates just have gone down. And current state of things, I, I don't, we don't think we see them rising anytime soon. So it's actually a good time for probably interest rate perspective to be looking at this. I think we have a good idea of what it's going to cost, so I won't go into those factors. But the third one was over here. If I zoom in, you can see part of it was, if you went to these estimates last year. We had a ten, we knew that it's going to be a 10% increase in the assessed valuation throughout the county. Where we got aggressive is Zions and all these scenarios used an 8.5% increase. Now, if you would have asked me a couple of months ago, I'd say eight and a half, the way the economy was going, everything, I thought that, that's sustainable and especially if we have a, I don't know, have some businesses moved into town or something, you know, that might be, might, I, I thought that 8.5 may be sustainable. That might be good. Now we get into days where all known, we know today, if there's a recession on the horizon, that might, might be too high. You know, might be maybe too aggressive, but I just wanted to point out that's one of the factors that was able to bring it this low. Was that. So that's what we had in those estimates. So at this point, I just thought I'd ask what questions you had as you were able to look through these scenarios. Kind of what, I thought this would be the best time for you as a board to talk about what you'd like to do as far as preparing for our, our strategy for this, for this coming year in the bond election.
Well, that was my, one of my questions is gearing up for what might happen. What might happen? Is that growth rate too high and how will that affect?
Yeah, if you would like, I could actually ask them to lower those a little bit to see what it would, you know, then we could compare, here's with the higher numbers, here's with the lower on that assessed valuation. How would that look from that tax perspective? You know, I could put it back to the original rates, what they were, what we were using last year and they could compare last year's assessed valuation to this little more aggressive one.
That, I, I don't know what other people think, but that might be good just because I think we need to be mindful of what's going on right now, knowing things can change and hopefully things will get better, but the economy isn't unknown right now. And although I want to take advantage of a no tax increase bond and we still need the school, I mean, you know, regardless of growth or not, but if it affects the tax payment, that's something I think we need to consider for sure.
Okay.
Alan?
Yeah, so I had two questions I wanted to ask, one having to do with, was that scenario three that you just showed us, Lark?
It was actually four was the one I had on the screen there, yeah.
Was I reading, I mean, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm looking at it correctly, that we would be allowed to represent to our patrons that we could build all three schools and their tax, their tax exposure would go down thirty dollars, I guess on a $250,000 home. Did I, was I looking at that?
Yeah.
I wasn't sure.
Yeah, that's what it would be on if, you know, using that factor on scenario four. And you're right, four was all three. That's, that's probably one of the biggest questions we ought to answer as a group. I assumed we wanted all three projects. We probably ought to look at around 180 million unless there's some feeling of no, we need to switch that up, but but yeah, that would be on 180, all three schools, exactly. That's twenty-nine on a, on a residence. This rate over here, the fifty-four, fifty was the business rate.
Okay, well, that's, yeah, that's shocking in a good way. And then the other thing I wanted to ask about was we'd been hearing so much about escalating construction costs. You know, how much it was skyrocketing and, and with everything kind of being brought to a standstill. I know Steve's not here, but, but is there a chance that it actually drops or is, you know, less expensive?
Or at least holds still for a little bit.
Or at least holds steady, right.
Won't raise so much. Superintendent?
I'm concerned that that 180 number isn't good anymore.
And what are you basing that on? I mean, have we talked to, we?
Just from talking with Steve about construction costs and and escalating costs, I think you can, I think you can easily go to 190 or 200 to get the same thing done. Or of course, the other option is to change what you're planning, but it's not going down.
We, I did meet with him and on the 180, we did feel like using his estimates from last year that that would cover the three. I just wanted to stress that it would. And that, and that did have some inflation in there, built in, built inflation, but you're right, that, but that's, that was a certain square footage for these schools. Now let's use the logic of you decide to change that in any way. That's what Steve, if he were here, would say because I've heard that over and over that if we change the square footage in any way, make it larger, add a pool, do some additional features, you sound saying, yeah, you can eat that up pretty quick. So you know, just based on what he had in there for square footage and what we could do, yeah, those, we did go through those numbers again and check that the 180 would be fine and we felt like they could. Now if it gets larger, things change. Yeah, of course, that, that may not be enough, but yeah. Very good questions, that's for sure. Looks like Scott had his hand raised if I, sorry.
No, I just didn't lower it, sorry.
I meant Scott Bryan, but that's all right. Maybe that wasn't a hand I was seeing.
Yeah, no, I, I just, the question I had was that there are a lot of variables that have changed dramatically in the last thirty days, but I don't know that any of us know what it's going to look like, right? The, the economy, you know, the unemployment, the, the building costs may very well have decreased. Depending on what organizations are able to do and where they're, where they're sitting in, you know, three to six months when we, you know, start to really see some recovery. And I think for any of us to suggest that we know that is probably disingenuous. The reality is we have no way of knowing. You know, if we did, we probably could make a whole lot of money out of something else and not this. Because there's so many variables out there right now. The, the one thought though is, just as a conservative, I, I echo what Marissa said on those projected growth numbers. You know, an 11% growth at least for 2020 seems really, really, really optimistic, sitting here on, you know, March the 31st right now. And, and even those other numbers, I, I'd like to see those dramatically lowered as we start to do some projections. I just, and, and again, Zions is better at this than I am. I mean, they're a lot closer to it. But I would be curious to see what their estimates would be even for, you know, next year.
Yeah, that's a good point. Now granted, the 2021 was, was pretty close because they got that off the tax commission side at that point. Now that being said, the county hasn't officially released it, but you know, that's as of January 1st. Well, lots happened since January 1st. So yes, if, my point was if this year did come in at that 10 or 11 would be, yeah, that's great, but it's the future years. Me personally, I worry about them too. I, I, I don't know if it's going to be that high. It's a very good, very good point.
The, the other, just general observation and a negative number will be helpful for sure. And it, it will be very interesting to see where just our own community comes out. You know, the other side of this journey here for the next, you know, thirty, sixty, ninety days. We, we could see some really stingy unemployment potentially and you know, it, that could really weigh heavy on, on voters, right? We, we may find voters who were very much in favor of it, you know, last November or not. Just depending on their own individual circumstances that, you know, depending on where they're at in their employment situations and, and their comfort with their jobs and, you know, it, I, I don't think it's, we're going to come out and just look like we did in February in September. The world is going to be different and it's really scary. But we need to be very careful about some of those projections, at least be very conservative. That would be my, my one ask, I guess.
Marie is on, Marie Denson, Communications Director. She said Steve is watching on Facebook Live and she's been talking with him. So she has some comments from Steve. Marie?
So I just asked him what his thoughts were when you asked about the price for 180 million and he said at this time that it really is just going to depend on what happens right now, although last year it's gone up since, since then. There's no way to determine if 180 million is the, the right number and he doesn't have any projections. So I'll, I'll let you know if anything else comes up.
Okay. Thank you. What else? Anyone else? I, I personally, I agree with what has been said and I think we have to be mindful for sure of the people who live in our community. That being said, I think we also have to take advantage when we have the opportunity. And in this situation, we have a, a great opportunity where we can get the schools that we do need. I mean, the need didn't go away just because the bond didn't pass. So without, if, if there really is no tax impact, then I hate to not take advantage of that situation. So I think we don't have to make the decision tonight. We do, I think we do need to get some figures that we can compare from Zions and I agree with what Scott Bryan said, that Zions knows what they're doing. And I think they can give us, and we can compare those. We don't have to make a decision tonight. We actually have a couple of months, really, although if we're going to do a bond, we don't want to do it in one month. We want to, you know, get good information and get it out there in a timely manner, but I think we need some more information and then we go forward, see kind of what happens with the economy and with our community and how long this does last. But we, we do still have the need, you know, for those schools.
Yeah, I, I think with the tax lowering, that is a better option, but I just think we need to make our strategy a lot different because there's so much difference in the community and the economy. And, you know, there's just a lot of, I mean, we lost pretty bad and there's just kind of a lot of bad feeling out there. We, we've got to come up with something really different.
Yeah. Melissa?
I don't know, you know, you said because we didn't lot, because we lost the bond doesn't mean the school need isn't there. And I'm going to reiterate because of this, I don't know, tragedy, crazy situation we're in right now. That also doesn't change the need for schools. Our community, even with the economy going down, is still growing and will still continue to grow and need to make sure we have seats for our kids in our community and how we do that, we need to make sure we're sensitive to the situation and we have the correct information from the professionals that know the growth and all this other stuff, but to take advantage of this tax or this bond dropping off is crucial.
Could I add that this point I thought of, at least what I've written down as far as future scenarios. That's why I would want to know if there's another one out there. We, we ought to run so you, everybody make sure we got, we've covered them all. But I had originally thought that I would take this scenario four, which was 180 million to cover three schools, that, that I would just, we would just lower the assessed valuation changes, make them more conservative so we can compare that change from last year to this one and see what that scenario was. But is there other scenarios you want me to run? I'm, I only ask because Julia's comments might be, maybe we look at a different dollar figure or any other scenarios outside of that. or any other scenarios outside of that one you want me to run, I should say.
Well, the other scenarios that you ran were different amounts.
They were different amounts. The, the tax impact ended up
Being the same.
Not really changing, yeah, from scenario one to scenario four. That's why I thought that doesn't seem to be making as big of an effect on it. But could, it could, depending on how, being a little more conservative works out in some other ones, so.
Well, I mean, the taking advantage of it while we can is, is absolutely correct. Being sensitive to there's, there's absolute needs and then there's needs two and three years down the road, right? I mean, there's a progression of most critical, there's critical, critical, critical needs and there's critical needs and, and there's needs. I mean, there's, I'm not suggesting any of these are not needed, but there are some that are more needed than others. And keeping it net zero or even $30 less is, is good. But is there a stronger likelihood that we could just pass a high school in this environment? And even say taxes are going down $60 or, or $50 or whatever that is, if we only have the high school on now? The reason those are about the same is that we're not going, taking those bonds or we're not getting those proceeds from those bonds until a little bit later because they're staggering construction start dates, right? And, and we could lower those taxes pretty dramatically and still come out with a high school. And not take those other two schools to, to the voters this round. It's, it's just, it's a thought. I mean, that's something that maybe Julia, you know, might be alluding to. But we're just going with those absolutely critical needs and then.
Okay, we have Marie's hand and superintendents, but I do have to say first, when you look at the scenarios though, the tax impact is virtually the same. So I, and, and the one that we're looking at now with the most is the one that's coming out later and later. So in, in fact, if we go with the same scenario, you would have almost the exact same tax impact by only issuing half of the money. So it doesn't make sense to me to not go for this three schools that we need. I get what you're saying and I get that when we get, if we get a new scenario, that could change. And I think we have to keep that in mind. But given the circumstances that we've been presented thus far, that, that doesn't make sense to me. Marie, did you have your, no, Scott Rogers?
I just wondered if Julie could elaborate a little more on when she said, you know, Julie, you felt like we needed to come at it with a different plan. What, can, can you be a little more specific on what you think would help with that? I, I don't know how to make all those, you know, bad feelings that are perceptions out there go away. And they're certain to come up against, even if they're not accurate.
Yeah, that's, that's true. And, and I, I feel that a lot of people are, even without taxes are just, don't trust us. Like they're not going to believe that it really isn't taxes. So I think we really need to explain, gosh, how, how did we go last year with this tax increase? And this year, a tax decrease, you know, how, I mean, people are going to look at like, why did we wait that year? Why didn't we wait that year with everything considered? And, I mean, I've had a lot of people talk to me and probably because I voted against the Romney thing. But just with that article in the paper that Tim had with our property taxes and everything, just saying, wow, you know, our poverty taxes are high. And, you know, I, I just think that we have a bad feeling in a lot of areas, not, not everybody. I mean, there's a lot of people who know we need this goal and I, I, I know we need the school. I'm just saying, we've just got to, I, I don't know exactly what it is, but we've got to come up with some really good explanation and some strategies to let people realize what, what our plan was and is.
Good point. Alan?
I, I was just gonna, I agree with that actually. I mean, I think we, we just gotta figure out the narrative and, and pitch it that way. I was just gonna reiterate your point, Marissa. It seems, based on what we've been presented today, which I understand might change, it seems crazy to me to not pursue all three. And the reason I say that is because we pursue one and our bond packet says you're going to have a $35 or $40 drop in your, in your tax payment. And then, you know, a year and a half later, two years later, the junior high is a critical need. Or the Grant's elementary is a critical need. And then we're going out again, but now we're saying your taxes are going to increase $50. And so I, you know, I just, from a, from a public perception standpoint, and I understand we've got to, we've got to fix the narrative and make sure it's clear. But just the opportunity to have all three while still being able to represent a drop in taxes seems like too good an opportunity to pass out.
Yeah, but again, that would, it does depend on redoing those scenarios and maybe with a little bit lower or a lower growth rate and seeing how that pans out too.
Absolutely. And, and it's not to be incent, I mean, that Scott Bryan is correct. I mean, we're going to see, I think, widespread effects on employment and take home pay. And I mean, we've been riding a humming economy for the last while and that's going to hit. So assuming those numbers hold though, we're still going to be able to, to tell a good story. And, and the need for the schools hasn't gone away.
And I, I think it's just, it's critical if, and, and you know, there's two sides of that coin. If the economy does go south, 180 million may be more than we need. It, it's very conceivable that those building costs fall, depending on the outcome of the economy, right? I mean, we, we might be able, the only bright side to this whole conversation could be that we could, might build this for 150 million. If, if, but I, I don't know that that's necessarily good because that means that we have a serious unemployment and some other real issues. But I could fairly easy see a scenario, the building backs off and that, and that those costs do fall. And heaven only knows what that's going to be. And we wouldn't be able to predict that when we take it to the election anyway. Because at that point, we're really just trying to read tea leaves. And so we're going to kind of have to stick with that 180. But I don't know that we try to massage that too much, either higher or lower, because heaven only knows what it's going to be in January.
Right. I would agree with that. Other comments, questions? Julie is thinking of a, a good strategy for us.
Yeah, I'll have my next board meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks everyone for your comments. What I think I'll do, run a rerun for, it goes along with what the rerun as well, do the same thing in case there happens to be a difference between one and four when they reruns.
Okay.
Think about it, it doesn't just anything for Zion's to change the spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Afraid we lost Marissa. At least she appears frozen on my screen.
Pause there for a second, but I think I'm back. It was going slow.
This is our chance to talk about, about Marissa, everyone.
I love, I mean, she just, she's so dialed in. Oh, there she is.
Take that back.
Stoic, stoic.
Stoic is right. That was weird. Okay, that gives you enough then to go with Lark. Any other comments on that? That's just, just a heads up to everybody, this will be our board meeting situation for April as well. Can you hear me?
There, now we can.
It's good?
Like you froze there for another minute.
It's like I'm a statue. Okay, are we good? Is it frozen again?
No, you're there.
Okay.
We'll tell you if you're not there.
And I won't even know because you'll be telling me and I'll be frozen, but that's okay.
Someone take a screenshot.
Thanks. Um, this will be our, our norm for board meeting next month too.
He's probably trying to use the school internet, Bryce.
It's across, sometimes my computer does try to use the school internet across the street and everything's slow.
Who's going to tell her?
Oh, there she is again.
Guys are making.
You got nothing, the last bit of your conversation, Marissa.
Oh brother.
Maybe our Zoom 40 minutes is running out, it's going to cut off.
That's right. Okay, well, hopefully my computer's not trying to.
Can I ask, can I just ask why, oh?
Go ahead.
Wait, what were you going to ask, Alan?
I was just going to ask why the Lakeview discussion was pulled or what that was about.
Lark, do? They had their budget, their, their budget isn't ready, so they asked to move to the next board meeting.
Okay, fair enough.
That's why.
Yeah.
Actually, we actually thought they were going to have them today. To real, the, the ultimate scoop they gave was that the, the budget was for the full project area they had already come up with and they need to break out only the, what was it, 400 acres, they're in the agreement? So they need to break out and that's why they weren't ready to bring that. They had the full one. They need to break it out and bring that one back.
But in case they had it ready, we want it on the agenda.
Yeah, no, perfect. I'm ready for Scott Bryan's motion then, unless someone.
Hey, before you make it, just remember that next month, this board meeting will be Zoom as well, both board meetings next month. So plan on the same format.
In some ways, other than Marissa just freezing up and becoming stoic, I actually kind of like this format, this work. I think it, for me personally, it made me be more thoughtful and reflective and then, so anyway, it's just my observation.
Well, I mean, I had more than 50 viewers, it seemed like throughout.
Yeah, we've had a lot of people watch, which is awesome.
Just going to say, because of that, we've got 50 people watching and maybe more people will give a shout out to our teachers. We already did to Bryce, but, and our students and parents and how awesome. And for the most part, so willing to be patient with everyone. And it's been, I don't know, it's tribute to the district office, but also to our patrons. Because it's, I'm so grateful to be a part of this community. It's been.
And our lunch people.
Amazing.
Yeah.
It's incredible.
Our lunch people.
Feeding about 15,000 kids a day, you know, or meals, breakfast and lunch, so 13,000.
Unbelievable.
14,000 breakfast and lunches, not individuals, but that's still an incredible amount. And then our custodians are cleaning, I mean, our buildings just, you know, our custodians are out there cleaning and working hard and the district office staff. And, you know, we still are doing recruiting. We're still trying to get, you know, teacher spots filled for next year. And we're in the process of getting ready on the budget to look at negotiations. We know we need to be conservative this year because there could be, very well be a, you know, a deficit in the budget and some, some reductions in the budget amount. So we'll be cautious moving forward.
So yes, big shout out to everyone. Thank you. Okay, yeah, for everyone. Our staff and parents and students alike, thank you. Okay, now we can have a motion to adjourn.
I've tried three times, but you were stoic two of them.
You must have stoic on that one.
Is that professional? Go ahead.
I did, now I'm up to five.
You're stoic.
I motion we adjourn.
Okay, okay, moved by Scott, seconded by Alan to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thanks everyone and thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Night you guys. Thank you.